Okay, everybody smile, one, two, three. Thank you. Okay, sorry everybody. I have to be further back. Okay, look official. Right? Do you want to do like a group standing picture? Sorry. Are you still sorry that you have all this?
Okay everyone, it is 5:30 on January 9th. We are, if I can have a roll call please.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Orbach.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Clark.
Here.
And Mayor Brooks.
Here. We're gonna now move to closed session and return at our regularly scheduled meeting at 6pm. Is there anyone out in the audience who would like to address council? Seeing that, we'll now recess to closed session.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to our January 9th regularly scheduled Capitola City Council Meeting. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to move to item two, additions and deletions to the agenda. Staff, do we have?
I don't have any changes, but I understand you may want to reorder.
Yeah, so I'm going to go ahead and move item eight B as our first item on tonight's agenda, and then I'll let Vice Mayor Clark decide when to see item eight A.
Can we check on closed session?
Yeah, I'm going to get to that right now. Julia, did you get that? Okay, great. So now on to item three. This is a report out on...
Closed session.
Good evening. Closed session was had on the item on the agenda, and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Now on to item four. This is additional materials. Do we have any additional materials?
Good evening, Mayor. This evening, we received 59 emails relating to item eight A. One email relating to eight B, 32 relating to eight C, two emails to eight D, and three emails relating to item eight E. All materials were made available to the public and to the city council for public review as a part of tonight's agenda packet online, and were distributed to the council in advance of tonight's meeting.
Great, thank you. Now, this brings us to item five, oral communications by members of the public. This is an opportunity for our public to address city council this evening on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Goran Klapic. I'm a veteran, Army. I served in the Army overseas. But I'm going to address something here tonight is the fentanyl and the cocaine crisis that is happening in the United States at the moment, when cartels are infiltrating the United States and fighting the police units on the Army. What I'm saying is, it's very dangerous. I think who I hold responsible for this at the moment in the last four years is Joseph Biden. He's in charge. He's the chief, the commander in chief. He's responsible for it. The DEA, the Drug Enforcement Agency, must work properly. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Adrienne West. I wanted to come and speak in opposition to the removal of the recent changes to the Bay Avenue Hill Street intersection. Some of you might remember, I tragically lost my mom in November of 2023 in the area of Crossroads Loop, and I have a lingering feeling of responsibility to speak for all of her friends at the Bay Avenue Senior Housing Complex. While it's too difficult for them to attend these meetings, I haven't heard much outreach to them beyond the initial meeting held at their campus to discuss what we see now at the intersection. I'm very concerned they're not being included in important discussions about reversing the changes made here. Why isn't anyone from Kimley Horn or City Planning or Public Works or City Council involving the seniors' input in any of these discussions or votes? They are your predominant pedestrian traffic here in the area, and they deserve a little better than trying to run for their lives to cross this busy street. They deserve a voice to be heard. Many of the seniors cannot drive and therefore are forced to cross Bay Avenue on foot to take care of their basic food and medical needs at Nob Hill Center. If you continue with the idea to remove the changes you made just a few months ago, you're essentially saying that the safety of our seniors doesn't matter. I'm hoping the council will reconsider reverting the changes made in interest of public safety to everyone. It is safer. Kimley Horn has given data thus far to show that. Less accidents, less near misses. Data speaks for itself in that regard. How many of you been to a four-way stop this week, and there's some dilemma in whose turn it is to go next? I bet every one of us has seen this on a weekly or daily basis, where a lot of times we don't know for sure who's first, or there's someone who's obviously in a bigger hurry and thinks they're next, and they really aren't. Now double that and add one more stop. You see, that is what's happening at the intersection. The original configuration, the one you're all talking about putting Mac up, has nine stops. Now you factor at least one or more of those cars coming to their stops at alternating intervals, likely unsure if personally they go next or the neighboring car is next, and now you have a big problem. Complicate that with people on foot or bike trying to cross at one of the four crosswalks happening simultaneously. It gets even more confusing. If we can't figure out a four-way stop, how on earth are we going to figure out a 10-way stop? I recently saw a pedestrian almost get hit while somebody wasn't looking and ran through the left-hand turn lane stop sign. Luckily, an officer with CPD was there and pulled them over, but that person was a step away from being tragically hurt in the intersection, and that's with the seven stops we have now. So there's a little more traffic than there was. We expected that. It was actually written into the plan. It may or may not resolve somewhat once the freeway on-ramp and the cap-up bridge are opened up, but obviously we can't predict the future. The fact is, as our population grows, so does our traffic issues. It's just how things work. Until more time has passed, we don't truly know this current configuration, how it will benefit us. It's far too early to remove it all. Please reconsider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Is this higher than usual? I shrunk in size. Marilyn Garrett, I'm a retired teacher. I see myself as a truth teller and advocate for health, and we are often told that things are safe and healthy when they aren't, like vaccines, safe and effective. Here's a book that came out recently called "An End to Upside Down Medicine: Contagion, Viruses, and Vaccines, and Why Consciousness is Needed for a New Paradigm of Health," by Mark Gober. This is from a publication called Wise Traditions from Fall of 2024, and it's part of Weston A. Prize Foundation. If you think that researchers follow the scientific method when they claim to isolate viruses, rethink. Like other critics of virology, Gober, the author, asserts that the studies that do not physically isolate viruses cannot claim that those viruses exist, and if the existence of a virus has not been proven, a nonexistent thing certainly cannot be proven to be an intracellular parasite that causes disease in its host. It follows that drugs invented to help the body fight the unidentified virus are an impossibility. One virus never proven to exist is polio. Gober claims the flaws in the research and allegedly proving its existence, and cites the plausible perspective that links polio's typical symptoms to toxic pesticides such as lead, arsenate, benzene hexachloride, and DDT. Jim Webb compiled data suggesting that polio cases track closely with pesticide use from 1940 to 1970. Crediting polio vaccines as a savior fails to consider the reduced use of toxic pesticides. Eleanor McBean wrote a 1950 book called "The Poisoned Needle," and she concluded that the Spanish flu was caused by vaccine-induced poisoning. Her research indicated that the flu only hit the vaccinated. Those who refused the shots escaped it. Takes more investigation and questioning the official narrative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for items not on tonight's agenda? Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I just wanted to talk about the road ballards, and thank you for putting them up. I know you've been under scrutiny from the public and even voting pressure, which is, you know, you're doing the right thing, putting those up. It really feels safer when I leave Nob Hill. I shopped there twice today. Even I provide food for two families, my mother, and so I was just there. And taking that wide turn feels so much better. Forty-four point five feet of, according to this map, of area has been taken away from this area where people could get hurt. And I did, of course, my mother-in-law got hit and almost killed, and of course, my friend's mother Debbie got killed further down the road. I know a light's going to inevitably be what we need, along with changes at Gales and changes at New Brighton and area for people leaving the school as well. The bridge is going to get fixed. That'll help. So you're under a lot of pressure, but I just hope you don't give in and can meet something that will need all of us. I mean, obviously, the money's expensive for the light. I just want, again, thank you for doing what you did, and it's certainly better. And hanging there with the public. I heard that it's going to be taken down, so that's why I'm here tonight. I was a little bit in shock. I know it's a test. Most of the people complaining in good times were people from the school, touting that it's just the seniors using it. We have the motel on the hill. We have, yes, the seniors...
One email relating to eight B, thirty-two relating to eight C, two emails to eight D, and three emails relating to item eight E. All materials were made available to the public and to the city council for public review as a part of tonight's agenda packet online, and were distributed to the council in advance of tonight's meeting.
Great, thank you. Now, this brings us to item five, oral communications by members of the public. This is an opportunity for our public to address city council this evening on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Goran Klapic. I'm a veteran, Army. I served in the Army overseas. But I'm going to address something here tonight is the fentanyl and the cocaine crisis that is happening in the United States at the moment. When cartels are infiltrating the United States and fighting the police units on the Army. What I'm saying is it's very dangerous. I think who I hold responsible for this at the moment in the last four years is Joseph Biden. He's in charge. He's the chief. The commander in chief, he's responsible for it. That the DEA, the Drug Enforcement Agency, must work properly. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Adrian West. I wanted to come and speak in opposition to the removal of the recent changes to the Bay Avenue Hill Street intersection. As some of you might remember, I tragically lost my mom in November of 2023 in the area of Crossroads Loop, and I have a lingering feeling of responsibility to speak for all of her friends at the Bay Avenue Senior Housing Complex. While it's too difficult for them to attend these meetings, I haven't heard much outreach to them beyond the initial meeting held at their campus to discuss what we see now at the intersection. I'm very concerned they're not being included in important discussions about reversing the changes made here. Why isn't anyone from Kimley Horn or City Planning or Public Works or City Council involving the seniors' input in any of these discussions or votes? They are your predominant pedestrian traffic here in the area, and they deserve a little better than trying to run for their lives to cross this busy street. They deserve a voice to be heard. Many of the seniors cannot drive and therefore are forced to cross Bay Avenue on foot to take care of their basic food and medical needs at Nob Hill Center. If you continue with the idea to remove the changes you made just a few months ago, you're essentially saying that the safety of our seniors doesn't matter. I'm hoping the council will reconsider reverting the changes made in interest of public safety to everyone. It is safer. Kimley Horn has given data thus far to show that. Less accidents, less near misses. Data speaks for itself in that regard. How many of you been to a four-way stop this week, and there's some dilemma in whose turn it is to go next? I bet every one of us has seen this on a weekly or daily basis, where a lot of times we don't know for sure who's first, or there's someone who's obviously in a bigger hurry and thinks they're next, and they really aren't. Now double that and add one more stop. You see, that is what's happening at the intersection. The original configuration, the one you're all talking about putting back up, has nine stops. Now you factor at least one or more of those cars coming to their stops at alternating intervals, likely unsure if personally they go next or the neighboring car is next, and now you have a big problem. Complicate that with people on foot or bike trying to cross at one of the four crosswalks happening simultaneously. It gets even more confusing. If we can't figure out a four-way stop, how on earth are we going to figure out a ten-way stop? Um. I recently saw a pedestrian almost get hit while somebody wasn't looking and ran through the left-hand turn lane stop sign. Luckily, an officer with CPD was there and pulled them over. But that person was a step away from being tragically hurt in the intersection, and that's with the seven stops we have now. So there's a little more traffic than there was. We expected that. It was actually written into the plan. It may or may not resolve somewhat once the freeway on-ramp and the cap-up bridge are opened up. But obviously, we can't predict the future. The fact is, as our population grows, so does our traffic issues. It's just how things work. Until more time has passed, we don't truly know this current configuration, how it will benefit us. It's far too early to remove it all. Please reconsider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi. This is higher than usual. I shrunk in size. Marilyn Garrett, I'm a retired teacher. I see myself as a truth teller and advocate for health. And we are often told that things are safe and healthy when they aren't, like vaccines, safe and effective. Here's a book that came out recently called "An End to Upside-Down Medicine: Contagion, Viruses, and Vaccines, and Why Consciousness Is Needed for a New Paradigm of Health", by Mark Gober. This is from a publication called Wise Traditions from fall of 2024, and it's part of Weston A. Price Foundation. If you think that researchers follow the scientific method when they claim to isolate viruses, rethink. Like other critics of virology, Gober, the author, asserts that the studies that do not physically isolate viruses cannot claim that those viruses exist. And if the existence of a virus has not been proven, a nonexistent thing certainly cannot be proven to be an intracellular parasite that causes disease in its host. It follows that drugs invented to help the body fight the unidentified virus are an impossibility. One virus never proven to exist is polio. Gober claims the flaws in the research and allegedly proving its existence and cites the plausible perspective that links polio's typical symptoms to toxic pesticides such as lead, arsenate, benzene hexachloride, and DDT. Jim Webb compiled data suggesting that polio cases track closely with pesticide use from 1940 to 1970. Crediting polio vaccines as a savior fails to consider the reduced use of toxic pesticides. Eleanor McBean wrote a 1950 book called "The Poisoned Needle", and she concluded that the Spanish Flu was caused by vaccine-induced poisoning. Her research indicated that the flu only hit the vaccinated. Those who refused the shots escaped it. Takes more investigation and questioning the official narrative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for items not on tonight's agenda? Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I just wanted to talk about the road ballards, and thank you for putting them up. I know you've been under scrutiny from the public and even voting pressure, which is, you know, you're doing the right thing, putting those up. It really feels safer when I leave Nob Hill. I shopped there twice today, and I ride food for two families, my mother. And so I was just there, and taking that white turn feels so much better. Forty-four point five feet of, according to this map, of area has been taken away from this area where people could get hurt. And I did, of course, my mother-in-law got hit and almost killed. And of course, my friend's mother, Debbie, got killed further down the road. I know a light's going to inevitably be what we need, along with changes at Gales and changes at New Brighton and the area for people leaving the school as well. The bridge is going to get fixed. That'll help. So you're under a lot of pressure, but I just hope you don't give in and can meet something that will need all of us. I mean, obviously, the money's expensive for the light. I just want, again, thank you for doing what you did, and it's certainly better. And hanging there with the public. I heard that it's going to be taken down, so that's why I'm here tonight. I was a little bit in shock. I know it's a test. Most of the people complaining in good times were people from the school, touting that it's just the seniors using it. We have the motel on the hill. We have, yes, the seniors using it. We have kids coming from the school on these electric bikes flying through those stop signs. I don't even think they stop. You're saving lives, doing what you're doing. I know it backs up, and maybe we can come up with possibly other things before we can afford the light and other changes to the community. Again, we need to work on Park Avenue over at Brighton. And I know you guys have plans for Gales, and it takes time. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to now move on to item six. This is staff and city council comments. I'll begin with staff.
I just want to take a moment to thank all the first responders over this holiday season. It was a busy season in Capitola. We had a lot of events, village closure, horrible disaster on Longway, which thankfully no one was hurt. But I just want to thank our entire team for being there, showing up, and helping support our community, and also express just devastation that I'm sure we all feel for what's going on in Los Angeles right now. It's really a tragic day.
Okay, I'll start on this end. Any council comments?
I'd like to echo the city manager on our thoughts with our friends in Southern California. Huge tragedy. If we could just take a moment to think about them, we all have friends and family down there. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen?
Yeah, I was just going to echo that. And again, but I also like to especially thank our fire department, our local fire department, and the police department. Their response time was absolutely amazing, how they came out. Also, I think a shout out to Robin Woodman, who is our building inspector, who is coming in and helping us in a time that she has retired and come back, and, you know, she was immediately responded, which was really amazing. And also, I appreciate from PG&E and also TJ Welsh, who spent, I think, a lot, an inordinate amount of time down here dealing with that at the same time. And just following up, as we think about these things, I just want to, one thing maybe looking forward is that we can look at, looking at how we are as a community and how we are prepared for a disaster like this. We see what happens in Maui, and then I think we kind of forget about it, and then we'll see what's going through there. So maybe we could have a presentation, maybe from our fire department in conjunction with our police department, how does that look? And what does it look like to our community? And so those two things. And then just my one, the last thing I did want to recognize that is National Law Enforcement Professional Day. And so thank you and a shout out to our police department and all those other first responders. So thank you.
Councilmember Orbach?
Yes, I echo those sentiments. You know, the holidays, I, you know, as I'm spending time with my family, I'm also getting updates on my email about the fire that happened and then the storms and all the preparations through Public Works, making sure that our village was safe as the Santa Cruz Wharf fell in. And, you know, kudos to staff, to our response, to our chief for coordinating with the county and helping out with all of the coordination of the response. So thank you for your work.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to item seven. This is our consent items, which will be enacted by one motion in the form listed on tonight's agenda. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the council votes on the action unless a member of the council would like to pull one of the items this evening. So may I have a motion for item seven A through C?
I'll make a motion to approve items A through C.
Can I second?
We have a first and a second to approve items seven A through C. May I have all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This item passes unanimously. Okay, now we're going to move on to item eight B. This is my formal resignation for tonight. This is my last meeting, sitting and serving on behalf of the Capitola City Council. So I'm going to begin with public comments. I'll open this up to the floor for any comments from the public.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Kristen Brown, former colleague. I am here this evening to thank Mayor Brooks for her many tireless years of service to our city. As a council member and two-time mayor, you've worked to ensure that all community members, but specifically children and families, feel that Capitola is a welcoming and safe place to live, to work, and to play. Having served alongside you, I have seen firsthand how you tenaciously fight for what you believe is best for all Capitolans. You should be so proud, not only of what you've done here, but also of the accomplishment that has led to your departure. As the next CEO of the United Way of Santa Cruz County, I know you will bring the same commitment to our community and to community betterment that you have brought to the city council. I and so many others in this community are standing behind you. We appreciate you and we celebrate you for all that you've done and all that you are yet to do. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
To, oh, the assembly member wanted me to take a few seconds to express her appreciation and her congratulations to Mayor Brooks. Mayor Brooks has been, Mayor Brooks's years and dedication to Capitola have been absolutely transformative, and her positive impact have left, have been so impactful to the community and particularly to the youth, giving the youth adequate, making sure they have adequate resources so they can thrive. And although a bittersweet moment, we are extremely, she, the assembly member, is extremely excited for you and wishes you nothing but success. And we know that in your new role as CEO of United Way, you'll be able to reach even more people and be just as impactful, if not more. So that being said, I did want to take a few seconds to also present to you a certificate of recognition. It's a small token of appreciation from the assembly member and the team. So I'd love it if you can just get a quick photo, that'd be great. But again, a round of applause for Mayor Brooks. We really appreciate you in the city of Capitola. We really appreciate you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello.
This is my husband, everyone, so no pressure.
I got more nervous than you've ever been in the six months I've been up there. Mayor Brooks, we just wanted to express the amazing job you have done since the beginning, since being elected for city council. And I'll go into details, since it's well documented, the positive change you have made for this incredible town. The city of Capitola is grateful for all the hard work and commitment you have put in for these past six years. We are proud of you and for this and the new position you are taking on to continue helping the community on a greater scale for the county of Santa Cruz, for a great organization that helps families and kids. Last but not least, just wanted to say thanks to council and staff, past and present, for all the support you've given Yvette, especially Jamie, for putting up "Oh, with all the mayor's shenanigans". Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any council or staff comments before I go into my last words, please?
Say a couple of words how thankful I am, and I'm sure our whole community is, for all the years of service that you put in. And what an amazing role model and public servant that you've been. I've personally learned a lot from getting to work with you. And, you know, you'll be sorely missed on this council. I think the, you know, on the one hand, Capitola has a significant loss, and on the other hand, the county as a whole has a significant benefit. So I hope that we'll continue to be able to work together in a professional, friendly manner in the future. Thanks.
Yvette, I just really want to thank you, Mayor Brooks, for your years of commitment, dedication, and leadership to the city, especially for being the champion for equity, inclusion, families, and youth. You've paved the way as a trailblazer in your own right, as being the first Latina mayor of Capitola, and have fought to improve the lives of all of the residents in the city. You have been a strong and fierce leader for this community, and you'll be missed. And to be honest, I'm really sad by your departure because, and disappointed that I don't get to serve alongside you and learn from you. Congratulations on your position as the next CEO of United Way of Santa Cruz County. I know you'll serve this county well in that capacity.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate you, and also it's a winner opportunity for you and your family. Thanks for your six years of service, and we look forward to seeing you at a new level and representing many people in our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
I think we have something for you, Madam Mayor.
This is the part that's really awkward up here when, do I open it in front of everyone? Is that one of those things?
This is brought to you by staff and the city workers and the city council. It's a part of our wharf.
It includes a genuine fish hook that was actually attached to the wood as we salvaged it.
Chloe, Chloe, you did this, didn't you? Thank you. Julia, yeah.
Oh, I love it. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, and along with that, it's sad to see you leave. Definitely going to miss your leadership, and I'm super excited for you and your family about your new endeavors. Congratulations.
Madam Mayor?
Please, yeah, thank you.
On behalf of staff, I just want to say thank you for your service in the community. As a number of the council members mentioned, you've been a real champion for youth throughout your term of council. In addition, I would like to share with the community how instrumental you were in bringing millions of dollars into this community. You helped us forge closer relationships with our electeds in both Sacramento and Washington DC that directly resulted in, I think, off the top of my head, it was nearly $4 million that the city was able to obtain to help rebuild the wharf. We may even need almost $5 million to study the bridge, a lot of really great projects. And those things were really directly attributable to your hard work. In addition, I want to thank you for spearheading the campaign for Measure Y. It means a lot for the city and a lot for staff. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, so this is it. Final words. So again, thank you, everyone, for being here. It's so nice to see the community come together and come together in support of our full council and all of Capitola, all 10,000 residents here. Serving on the Capitola City Council for the last six years has been one of the greatest honors of my life. While it has not been an easy journey, it has been an incredibly meaningful one, shaped by challenges, triumphs, and the spirit of community. When I ran for city council in 2018, I could not have foreseen the challenges that lay ahead. One of my earliest experiences was confronting bullying and harassment, a sobering reminder of the importance of creating Capitola's first code of conduct to protect future council members from such behavior. Shortly thereafter, our community, and indeed the nation, was shaken by the devastating murder of George Floyd and countless others in the Black community. In response, we came together for Capitola's first Black Lives Matters March, and later, through my work on the Criminal Justice Committee, we established the Chief's Council, fostering transparency and community input on police policies. As Capitola's first Latina mayor, I faced judgment not from my expertise but from my superficial aspects, like makeup and style. Yet I carried on. We carried on. Through unprecedented times, a global pandemic, the tragic loss of a community member due to homophobia, devastating floods, and a cyclone bomb storm that ravaged our wharf and many people's lives. Even when we endured incidents like Zoom bombings with the Rachel slurs and the persistent internet misinformation that still continues to this day, Capitola's resilience never wavered. The truth is, no other council member has had to serve through such hardships. And yet, still while navigating these challenges, I managed to work full-time, raise my daughter, sit on an average of five boards, making $600 a month. This was never about the money, Capitola. It was about giving back to the community that shaped me, because not everyone has the opportunity to live or grow up here, and I was compelled to give back. Although these challenges were daunting, I persevered because I did it not just for myself, my family, and my daughter specifically, but for all members of Capitola to know that they have a place here. So I carried on, and we achieved so much. We secured millions of dollars of funding to rebuild Capitola's wharf in record time, completed our state-of-the-art library, and improved roadways, including our long-awaited upgrades to Claire's and Brahma Streets and the Monterey Avenue sidewalk. I spearheaded the Measure Y campaign to stabilize our budget and train raises for city employees and our police department. We partnered with County Park Friends to raise $1 million for the inclusive Treasure Cove Playground at Jade Street Park, creating a space where families and children of all abilities can come and play together, as well as partnered with the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Foundation, who funded an educational kiosk soon to be placed on our updated wharf. We enacted strong policies focused on equity, including the code of conduct, funding for anti-bias training, and Capitola's first flag policy to fly the LGBTQI flag during Pride Month. We banned flavored tobacco, prioritized residents' health, provided free feminine hygiene products in our public restrooms, and secured funding for Capitola's first green sweepper. And through a successful ballot initiative, we increased the TOT tax in 2018 to create a dedicated children's fund, expanded after-school and middle-school programs, and established Capitola's Youth Liaison Program. These accomplishments would not have been possible without the support of our dedicated department heads and staff. Your commitment to Capitola's success often goes unnoticed. I see you back there. But it deeply is appreciated. While I do not have enough time to thank everyone on staff with whom I have had the opportunity to work, please know how much I value you, your work, and your contributions. I want to especially acknowledge the exceptional women in leadership at the city level, including our city attorney Samantha and our first female chief of police, Chief Ryan. Your contributions inspire future generations to lead with confidence and purpose. To Jamie, our city manager, stop typing and listen. Your leadership and intellect are unparalleled. We often joke we were pinky in the brain, if anyone knows that show. You have guided our city with transparency and integrity, and I'm deeply grateful for your partnership. I want to express my deepest gratitude to my husband Larry, who stood here sweating profusely, who has stood by my side throughout my tenure. To my daughter, or, well, your love has been my foundation, so thanks, babe. To my daughter, thank you for always encouraging me to do better. And to my parents, who are not listening, I'll have to show them this later, for always being there for me, helping with childcare, staying with me, and taking care of all the things that allowed me to serve Capitola. Thank you to former council member Sam Story, Ed Botor, if I see you in the audience, Dennis Norton, Mike Tramini, Karen Hanna, Margo Morgan, and Kristen Brown, for your genuine support, always picking up the phone, always giving me your advice. This year, Capitola celebrates 75 years of incorporation, and it's because of you that we got here. And to our current council members, I urge you to continue laying the groundwork for Capitola's success. Tackle the challenges posed by state regulations and natural disasters proactively. Complete the strategic plan. Find a developer who values Capitola's unique character to rebuild the mall. Advocate for local control. Pursue grants to offset costs. Evaluate the annexation of 41st Avenue. Work with our BIA and 41st Avenue business owners and protect our precious Monterey Bay. Continue the partnership with the County Office of Education to support adults with disabilities. Prioritize Prioritize safe streets and advocate for e-bike safety requirements at the state level and meet our Climate Action Plan goals by 2030 while working with Central Coast Community Energy and Ecology Action. Focus on supporting our youth. They are our biggest investment, and always remember to work together, because that is the only way we get things done. To our community members, as you can see, it does not take one person to accomplish such feats. Every milestone that I talked about earlier was voted by an entire council of five. All council members work so hard, and I ask our community members to stay engaged. Visit our website regularly to get the facts. Sign up for our newsletter. Join a board or a commission. Follow the city on social media, and just call City Hall if you have any questions. To Ayla, our student liaison, and all the other girls and people of color like me interested in holding office or just wanting to do great things, this is my reminder to you. I've made room for you up here, so take up the space. You belong here, and don't let anyone tell you different. So finally, as I step down to accept the role of CEO for United Way Santa Cruz County, I leave with immense gratitude for this community. Capitola has shaped me, challenged me, and inspired me in ways I will carry forever. Together, we have proven that resilience, collaboration, and commitment to equity can overcome any obstacle. Thank you for allowing me to serve you for the last six years, Capitola. I am proud of what we have achieved, and I'm excited to see what lies ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now going to pass the gavel to Vice Mayor Clark to finish tonight's meeting. And I'm out of here.
Well, thank you again, Mayor Madam, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Well, let's get back, right back to work and get to item A, Mark Monte Foundation Fireworks 2025. Recommended action is that the city council consider whether to support continuation of the Monte Fireworks Show, tenantedly scheduled for Sunday, October 12, 2025. And if the council supports the continuation, direct staff to coordinate with the Monte Foundation to obtain the required coastal development permit for the event. And with that, we could start with anything from the staff or...
Hey, good evening, council members. You took my first slide, so I'll move on to the second slide. This evening, we are talking about the Monte Fireworks Foundation and the continuation of the event and the permitting associated with it. Next slide, please. So, just a little bit of background on this event. It was established in the mid-1990s originally at Seacliff State Beach and moved to Capitola a little over a decade ago in 2015. It's typically scheduled in the fall, in October, to promote local attendance rather than the Fourth of July. And the beneficiaries from the Monte Foundation from this event are multiple in the city of Capitola, including our skate park, library children's wing, the tennis court resurfacing, the pump track, and total funding to date is around $300,000. It's a very popular event, approximately 10,000 residents and visitors witness this event down near Village annually, and has had increasing trends in the past years. Next slide, please. So, the event management, the lead organizer of this is the Monte Foundation, who contracts with the fireworks company. It is launched, the fireworks themselves are launched off our Capitola Wharf, which is closed prior to the event and during the event. There's a lot of safety coordination managed by our police department with road closures, wharf closures, parking restrictions, and coordination with the Central Fire District and the Coast Guard. And then we also have cleanup efforts associated with that permit that we coordinate with Safe Our Shores. If council has any specific questions about the event management, Chief Ryan is up here to answer any of those in particular. Next slide, please. So, the, this is permitted by us, by our special event ordinance, but also requires a coastal development permit from the California Coastal Commission. We do have a coastal ability to permit many things in the coastal zone. However, since these are launched off the wharf, which are over coastal waters, the permit needs to come from the commission itself. We had a five-year permit. The last year of that five-year permit was in 2024, so it requires a new coastal permit. In the past five years, the climate for fireworks has significantly changed. The Coastal Commission has heard several items from other cities up and down the state over coastal waters for fireworks, and we anticipate that the new permit is going to require a significant alternatives analysis for both the environmental impact, a demonstration of community support, and that that permit, while the Monte Foundation is able to apply for that themselves on behalf of themselves, is much more likely to be successful if the city is a party to that permit. Cities in general are just more reliable on permit conditions because we are a public agency. Next slide, please. So, some of the discussion around this item, you've received significant public input via email, and I assume also in public comment this evening about this topic, but a lot of those themes are centered around the community tradition and the fondness of the event, concerns about noise, parking, traffic, and environmental concerns. We have tentatively discussed some of the alternatives that would be elaborated on on a alternatives analysis if we do decide to move forward with obtaining this permit, including drone shows, which do have issues with wind factors, us being on the coast, and then hybrid shows that may have some of those same issues. This permit would require significant effort from the city. And besides the alternatives analysis and managing that, there's also hearings that would need to happen with the Coastal Commission and staff and meetings. And then also additional permits needed from the National Marine Sanctuary, from Central Fire, and the Coast Guard. Next slide, please. The fiscal impact for the purposes of permitting would be for them to pay the permit fees and any consultants that we would need to do the alternatives analysis and the other agency permits. Fiscal impact for the event would be them still applying through our special event ordinance and permitting process and paying those fees that include PD and public works staff time. Direct city costs for obtaining this coastal development permit would be staff time and that coordination with other agencies. And again, the fundraising proceeds from the Monte Foundation typically benefit youth-focused community projects. Next slide, please. So, the conversation is a two-part decision. One, whether to support the event in general, and two, if the council would like to move forward with supporting this event, beginning the process with the city and the Monte Foundation to obtain the coastal development permit from the California Coastal Commission. And the last slide is the recommended action and a pretty picture from the last event. And I am here for any questions you may have, as is Chief Ryan.
Thank you for that presentation, and we'll take that to council questions.
Yeah, two questions. Has this been taken to, I think we call it the Commission on the Environment or Oversight Environmental Commission that we have in Capitola?
No, the Commission on the Environment has not had a quorum for their meetings in the past several months, and this item has not been on their agenda.
That's it for right now. Thank you.
Yes, I have a few questions. If the city is the applicant for the CDP, are we liable for any negative outcomes from the, of the event?
We are on the hook for meeting our permit conditions in general, but I'll let Samantha elaborate.
I agree with that. We're on the hook for meeting our permit conditions in general, but we would have the standard communities that we would have for any event that the city hosts.
Given that the detailed analysis needs to be done for the permitting, how much staff time will this take? Will the city be issuing the request for proposal for the consultant? And can you clarify whether this is, this is an environmental review under CEQA or something different required by the CDP? And if it is the latter, is the event a project under CEQA requiring environmental analysis?
Tell me if I miss any of that multi-part question. So, as far as staff time goes, getting a permit from the Coastal Commission, just in general, requires a lot of staff time. There's several meetings that we would have to have with our staff and then to have to take it to one of their hearings. So, I, it would be as much as any permit we'd apply for them for a city, solely a city-like infrastructure project. The environmental analysis that is required would be a permit condition, something that the Coastal Commission would require. That's not something that's required just to hold this type of event. And as far as CEQA goes, there is a statutory CEQA exemption for fireworks shows as temporary events.
Okay. Do you know how long the application will take, the process?
Generally, they take several months. I would say if the intention is to have this event in October is scheduled, that it would be ideal to start now with talking to the Coastal Commission about the permit.
Given that it requires such a significant amount of time from staff, will this responsibility fall on the community development director? And does our staff have the capacity to take this on without taking away from the other city's strategic priorities?
So, since this particular permit would be a city event, because we'd be a party to the permit, this would be a public works department issue. We do have an environmental projects manager who works on these kind of projects. If it's a council priority, we would make time to see the project through.
Sorry, one more, one more question. You know, I've been at these fireworks shows for many years, and, you know, it's always dependent on weather and the marine layer. And sometimes the marine layer is just so thick that all we saw were just colors in the clouds. I would really like to explore some of the options of having this set a different time of year, so the weather is better. Is that something we can explore?
This is for me. Good evening. So, we could explore it, however, the way that our events are set up right now, especially for major events, we found this to be an issue when the V-doublishious group came to us wanting to secure a date. A lot of them are taken. We have a lot of big events that happen. So, in terms of the impact, I, it's highly unlikely to find another date, as well as the fact that this was strategically placed at this time because a lot of our tourism is down, and it's more of a local event, being that it's in October. So, it's not a hard note, just would be really challenging.
Thanks, Chief.
Just have a few questions. I'm curious if there's been any kind of environmental impact study of this event in the past?
Not to my knowledge.
No, okay, thank you. And then, has any members of staff discussed with the Monte Foundation the potential for any sort of alternatives to the fireworks show?
So, I'm going to elaborate a little bit on that last question. I do know that the, this, the answer is a little bit complicated because it goes back pretty far. I think 16 years ago, the city put on a fireworks show for the city's 60th, and I helped get the permits for that. At that time, the sanctuary and the Coastal Commission hadn't gone through environmental analysis on fireworks before, and so it was a really complicated process. Subsequent to that, and what the Monte Foundation ultimately was able to do was the sanctuary and the Coastal Commission kind of led sort of an overall evaluation and came to a conclusion about environmental impacts for, I think, up to 10 public fireworks displays, five public fireworks displays in the Monterey Bay region and concluded, sort of did an analysis on up to that number, and as long as they were operating below it, it could work. So, there was that analysis that was done. I believe it might have been led by the sanctuary at the time. And so, this goes back more than 10 years, but they did some analysis on that. Your second question is about kind of the alternatives to fireworks. I've talked about that with the Monte Foundation. I think that there are a number of challenges. I do believe there's a representative from the Monte Foundation, but I think a couple of things. One is, is that drones have trouble operating in high winds, number one. Number two, large public drone displays have been challenging for other jurisdictions, is my understanding, in terms of actually being able to sync up the drones with the music, because the timing of the music is such that it, sound takes time to travel. And when you're looking at this background behind you, people are in very different places, and so being able to sync up all those things well is a challenge. Third, my understanding is that drone shows tend to be pretty expensive, but to get enough drones, you're looking at probably a six-figure number. I do know the Monte Foundation, I believe, tried it in Lake Tahoe once. I don't think it went particularly well, so Mr. Monte has indicated that they, they would love to partner with the city if the city wanted to do a drone show, but their, their thing, what's linked to the foundation, what's linked to the donations they're able to make, is the public fireworks show.
Okay, and one last question is, through the public comments and my own research, I found out that there is such a thing as reduced noise fireworks. Has that been discussed at all?
It has not, but my anticipation would be that would be a part of the environmental analysis that the Coastal Commission would need before they could issue a permit.
Got it. Thank you.
A question, are we seeking a one-year or a five-year permit? Do we know?
Ideally, we would seek a multi-year permit. Whether or not that would be granted is up to the commission. I will say the last three permits they've granted to other agencies were one-year permits.
And I know we're talking about drones and fireworks, and I know the drones keep getting better and better, so I think it's, it might be worth it to a visitor to gain, just as we're moving forward, as a hybrid, maybe. That's all I have. Thank you.
I want additional, would you mind elaborating a little bit on, I've heard of conditions of, from the Monte Foundation about, you know, how much money did they donate? I think you highlighted a little bit, but how much they donate, and what are the conditions to that, to the fireworks? Can you give us an overview of what that really looks like?
So, the Monte Foundation's mission is to support youth, youth being active in the community, and the projects, I think, were highlighted during the presentation that they funded in the past. On average, I think the funding is averaged between $30,000 and $40,000 per show that's gone to support the city of Capitola, sort of youth, kind of engagement, activity-type things, the skate park, the bike park, the children's wing in the library, the tennis courts, things like that. My understanding from Mr. Monte is that the donations are tied to a public fireworks display. So, structure, as I understand it, I haven't seen, seen the bylaws of the foundation as such that the putting on the public fireworks display allows for the donation out of the foundation's reserves.
So, no fireworks, no donations?
That's my understanding, yes.
And have we reached out that if we went through the process and Coastal Commission said no, would there be a conversation that would then be reenacted that, that now that, you know, things have changed in environment and process and stuff, that you can't do fireworks in this, on the Marine Sanctuary? As like, have we approached that subject, what that looks like hypothetically?
Hypothetically, if that was ultimately the answer from the Coastal Commission, I would do my best, if the council was interested in seeing that, engage the Monte Foundation and discuss if there are other alternatives at that stage.
I have one last question. I was curious if the fireworks posed any fire risk to the wharf?
I mean, I think the answer to that is, is, I think it, there is a fire risk. You know, there's a lot, we have a, the operator who puts on the fireworks display is very well-experienced. I think they operate internationally. They have, I think it was a $15 million policy. We have sign-off from Central Fire on the permits, and they go through a very elaborate process to ensure overall safety. I think to say that there's no risk would probably be a misstatement, but the risk to the wharf is minimized to the extent that's feasible.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess that'll bring us to... Okay, I guess that'll bring us to public comment. Welcome, and a reminder you'll have three minutes to speak.
Greetings to you all. I'm Dave Payton. Nice to see you. Like so many in this room, I've, I've had a chance to enjoy the fireworks, no doubt. And I've been fortunate enough to have great locations to do that. Someone's deck here, someone's backyard here, lovely, lovely places. So you can imagine my, my pleasure when I got invited to come up to Surf and Sand Mobile Home Park a couple of years ago to watch the show from up close and personal. And as we were excited to start and, and it got going, and it's an amazing, amazing show, it began to rain down on us, a handful of us that were there at the prospect and the beginning. And within a half an hour, we were covered. And the ground was covered and everything was covered. The cars were covered, everything. And that was one thing. But the next morning to go down on Cliff Drive and the litter down there was inches thick. And as the cars moved by, and this is early in the morning, the draft from the cars and the breeze would blow everything into the bay, into, into Capitola Bay. And I looked at that and I said, God, I've been loving these. But you know, that really turned me off to it. And I just had to say, I can't support the fireworks any longer, not the way that worked out. And that hurt, it hurt to come to that conclusion. I love the fireworks too. But it's time to move on. It's time to move on. It's a sanctuary, my goodness gracious. So anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And a reminder to folks, it, no clapping during a public comment. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Skip Allen, a 50-year resident of Capitola. As a professional sailor, I'm an advocate for the oceans and the clean air and the beaches. And for as long as we've had fireworks here, I've gone down on Monday morning at sunrise and started cleaning up. And there was a lot of stuff, as our friend just expressed, on the beach, out on the wharf, and I could see in the water. And later, I would attempt to go out on the water in my kayak and I would find pollution in the kelp, which really disturbed me. And I called up Save Our Shores here this last year and I said, who is cleaning up? And they said, we aren't because we don't have enough people. But I said, wait a minute, you're listed as cleaning up for the fireworks. And they, and the nice lady said, yes, I understand, but it's a Monday, it's a school day. We don't have any people. I said, excuse me? And she, I said, who cleans up? And she said, oh, we contract with the Monti Foundation. And I said, no, they're contracting with you. And she said, yes, but we don't have enough people. And so we go back and tell them and that they use their own people. And I go, that's a conflict of interest. And that's how it ended. But today I spoke with the head of NOAA, who supervises the Monterey Bay Sanctuary. And she confirmed that the permit for this year isn't issued yet. And if anyone wishes, they can speak with her and to tell them of their feelings. I have very strong feelings that fireworks aren't legal in Santa Cruz County. They're not legal in Monterey County. They're not legal over the sanctuary. And I wish that they would stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Fireworks means toxicity. Do we want a toxic sanctuary? Or do we want something that's clean and healthy? I've tried to go to fireworks displays like on the Fourth of July. I had to get up and leave because of all the chemicals in the air. You can't really clean up something poisonous. You might be able to shift it around somewhere else. And that's not measuring what goes into the body. I was part of a lawsuit to ban DDT, a carcinogenic pesticide, in 1969. All of us nursing mothers had DDT in our breast milk. I was, I was horrified. There was a lawsuit to ban it. We're now having forever chemicals, absolutely thousands of chemicals in the environment from these corporations. Who's looked up the fireworks corporation? What chemicals are in that? This is, like the first person said, it's time to halt this. Though it's fun to look at. The question is, what is the overall picture? How healthy is it? I don't think things are fun in the final analysis that are poisoned. Also, drones are microwave radiation weaponry. We hear of drones as spy devices, surveillance of everyone. For what purpose? I hear of drones being used in the causes of war and slaughtering people. To give a beneficial appearance to drones, like a drone show, to me is, it's obscene and deceptive. And as someone who feels ill from microwave radiation devices, drones are another one. Cell phones, the cell towers. We want Capitola to be a healthy scenic place, like in the illustration behind the council members, with all of the debris and toxicity. In the DDT lawsuit, we found that every bucket full of ocean water had traces of DDT in it. Though you couldn't see it, you couldn't measure it. Let's have a no vote on this, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hey, Council. My name's Michael Monti. I'm the vice president of the Monti Foundation. And I just wanted to note a couple of things about the show. So we've been doing this for 30 years. And in the 30-year history of the show, we've never had any deleterious effects. And it's been noted by all those that go into looking at the scenery after the show, noted by John Toll BS. He's a, he runs the environmental impact report. He's a teacher at Cabrillo College. He's never found any effects of any animals hurt by the show, ever. And I'd say it's a pretty good track record for the 30 shows here, as well as no deleterious effects at the shows that we run in Tahoe. So it's more along the lines of 34, 36 shows that we've done, and we've had no ill effects. So I'd want to enter that into the consideration. And we also feel that a drone show is not what we're looking to do, because we like the grandness of fireworks. And it lights the soul and it brightens the heart, because there is a bit of that big impact from the boom. And you feel that in your heart. And you just don't get that same effect with drones, as well as if drones were to collide with each other and fall into the marine sanctuary. It's much worse having those lithium ion batteries be in the water than some paper carbon cinders that have been burnt, because fireworks explode and burn. So they turn to carbon cinders. And we've always had a rigorous cleanup crew. And this past year, we had, was, was my first year running it. And I was out there from 6:45 AM till 11:45 PM. And I helped with all the setup. And we put fire blankets across. I know fire was an issue. We set up tons of fire blankets, covering the boats, covering every part of the wharf that we could that's exposed wood. So I just want to tell you that we take good care of this and we want to continue the show and just have, have it be available for the, for the grandness and spectacle that it is. For those reasons, yeah. You.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm a bottle of Capitola resident. I think I want to speak for the people that aren't here talking tonight. This may be a unpopular topic, but I think we all know that when the fireworks show goes off, there's at least eight or nine or 10,000 people, the smiles on their faces looking at the fireworks show. And this is a Capitola event. And part of the thing the city does, their main responsibility is to provide services, police, fire, entertainment's one of those services. And this is something where there's a collaboration, where Mark Monti has come out, he generously donates money that our parks, our schools benefit from. And there's no doubt the community enjoys this, this event. So I'm here to speak for those people that aren't here, those kids that sit on, on the beach and watch this every year, look forward to it. And then when it goes away, wonder, whatever happened to the fireworks show? Like whatever happened to the Begonia Festival? Through no fault of ours, the Begonias went away. There is no more festival. And now we've got an agency, the Coastal Commission, won't let us armor our bluff, won't let us save our homes. Our trail is falling into the ocean and we're going to let, yield to them to not have a fireworks show. I think we'd be remiss if we don't at least apply for the permit. And if they tell us no, well, then at least we didn't turn our citizens down and say, hey, we didn't stand up for you. We didn't try to promote something that we know you enjoy. I don't know what the actual polluting damages are, but they probably are over-exaggerated. And I think there's a lot of pollution going around the world that we don't talk about. So let's talk about Capitola. Let's talk about an event that's here. It's local, it's to our community, it's for our community. People enjoying it. Police department has no problem with it. Fire department has no problem with it. Our schools benefit. I'll leave you with that choice and welcome to a tough decision. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I don't have a lot to say. I live in Surf and Sand Mobile Home Park, which is where all the debris and all the toxins are spread. And every year, I've been there for 26 years, lived there. And every year, we have to put up with this mess and this toxicity and the animals being scared to death. I was not even bothered to mention the beings in the ocean, what the debris might be doing to them and all the toxicity. So I would like to stop and not be thinking so much of ourselves and what we want, our pleasure. I'd like to, for us to think more about the ocean, the earth, and the beings that live in the ocean and the people that live up there on the cliff, who get most of the debris poured down on top of them. And I don't want it anymore. I'm actually sick of it.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. My name's Christine McBroom. My family, my kids, we all live, work, and play in Capitola. We go through an entire summer where we share our city. The Monti Foundation puts on a really great event that I think brings our community back together. Yes, I believe there are negatives. I believe there are positives. I really urge you to look and weigh both of those out. But it's an event that brings our community together. It's a celebration, not to mention the funds that go back into our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Rodney with Capitola Candy Company. I just want to say in October, it's a slow month. It's when kind of we go at our decline, all the kids go back to school. We depend on the show for our economic stability. The businesses, I've talked to at least 20 businesses, so I could say I pretty much represent a lot of businesses in the village. Without this event in October, come up with something else. Everybody wants to cancel events. Come up with something else first, because we depend on this. So I hope you guys will look at that for you, canceling anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, that will bring us to council comments. And we start on this end.
Okay, this is not an easy topic. I think there's really good points on both sides. Clearly a beloved community event. Approximately 10,000 people enjoy every year, the vast majority of whom did not choose to make public comment. There are also obviously environmental impacts, noise impacts, that I think should be taken into consideration. So while I can definitely sympathize with both sides of this, I would be personally interested in, one, seeing if there are any alternatives to the show that could make, you know, people on both sides of the aisle happy. Two, potentially moving forward with approving the fireworks show. But with the contingency that we do a deep dive into the environmental impact and mitigation of any negative effects to our coastal sanctuary. And finally, to see if we did move forward with the continuation of fireworks show, to see if there's any way to reduce the noise, which I believe there are products that do that. Thank you.
Yeah. And so, thank you for those comments, Councilmember Peterson. I'm in agreement with you on those things. I think there, it needs to be additional, I think, research or some environmental impact. I think I'd like to see it brought back to, you know, we all have appointments that we appoint people to. And I think to not have our commissioner or environment involved in this process and advising us is one thing that bothers me to step. I also look at, we should look at from a Coastal Commission standpoint, is this a new trend? And for us to specifically say it is a new trend or not a new trend? So I'm in concurrence with you, with your comments regarding looking at other options. As I read the application, it talks about how Save Our Shores does this cleanup and stuff like that. But are they just looking at the shores and they're not looking at the other communities around? We heard from Surf and Sand up there. You know, it might have been something that has been overlooked. And also, I think would depend on if there was some wind, it might not be there. It could be up on the other side of our village. And so those are my comments around the issue where I stand on it.
First, I want to say thank you so much to the Monti Foundation for all of your years of coordinating with the city, all of your donations and contributions to projects that benefit the youth in our community. I am also very torn about this. Like I said, my family and I have enjoyed this show for years. I am, you know, a little reluctant to approve this, only because there are just, just the potential negative effects, right, to human health and the environment. I really can't, I mean, I love to see this trend, tradition be carried forward, but I cannot ignore the public health concerns raised by our residents, the health and safety concerns to our marine sanctuary. And I reject the idea that we can't be creative problem solvers in the 21st century and also be environmental stewards. During my campaign, I heard from many residents from Surf and Sand, as well as Trade Winds, the mobile homes, that every year they get a ton of debris fall into their property. the mobile homes, that every year they get a ton of debris fall into their property from the fireworks. I know this is the first time the city will be applying for the permit. I have some concerns about liability with the raging fires going on in L.A., in Southern California. I also worry about fire risks after spending millions of dollars repairing our wharf. I don't want to see this event killed. I just want to, I just want to, I want to have staff sit down with the Monte Foundation to see what other options we can explore. And I can be sweet, though, I do want to see an event continue.
Okay, that brings us to the recommended actions. I feel that it's important that we do have the fireworks. Maybe we can ask for staff to put in for the permits. And even if they get a longer permit, we still take it year to year. And when we have the next fireworks, we can have our commissioner of the environment look into some of the effects and then take it year to year. But the recommended action was is to see if we can obtain the required coastal permits. I'll leave it out there for a motion.
One question for staff, sorry about that. If we start the process, if the process got started on the permit, and if the permit was issued and we got some information, the facts that came back that identifies that there was an issue, and you can just stop and just not have the event? Can you stop the permit in the process, or is there an issue of starting it and stopping it?
Short answer is yes. The coastal commission permit is independent of the city's approval for the event. The city issues what we call our special event permit. You may recall, we updated our special event permit ordinance recently. So just because the coastal commission has issued a permit doesn't mean the city council has issued that permit. So it does, would still have to come through the city council.
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear on my question. My question was if we tonight voted to start the process and we were going through the process and we were collecting more data and we found halfway through it that some of the data was a danger, or we worked with the Monte Foundation and found a way, another way, could we stop, could the application be stopped at the coastal commission standpoint halfway through the process?
I think it could. I'm not sure if we still have a representative from the Monte Foundation here to talk a little bit about that. Obviously, they're going to be incurring some costs with the consultants and things along those lines. So the further we got into it, but I think just because we submitted an application with the coastal commission doesn't obligate us to continue through to any final hearing, if that's clear.
Thank you.
You know, it sounds like because this is the first year the city is applying for this permit, and from the staff report, it's because it's a more complex process. It is because they want to look at all of those things, like alternative location and alternative media, environmental impact assessment, engaging, you know, community support, and having a public agency accountable. So we are going to look into all of those things and have a request for proposal from a consultant to look at those factors. And then we still have a decision to make based on the results, whether we want to continue to move forward with that event. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
In that scenario, I am inclined to have the city go ahead and submit the requests for the permit and see what the results are. With my understanding that the fees for all of those things is not a fiscal burden for the city because the Monte Foundation is going to pay for those, the fees for the consultant and the time, right?
Yes, the plan would be that the Monte Foundation would be funding the consultant to do the environmental analysis. The proposal is that our staff time that's worth working on getting the coastal CDP wouldn't be billed, but our time for the special event permit that takes place in the police department, that time is billed as part of the special event permit process.
So my question to Jessica then is, do you think this would take so much time from your plate that you are unable to focus on some of the other public works projects that we have in the pipeline?
So we have several planning and capital projects, obviously, going on right now. Again, council priorities take precedence, so we would make it a priority. I don't see any projects having to fall off of our schedule based on adding this one.
Okay. Any other comments?
It all sounded like you weren't ready to make a motion.
I, can I? Sure. I'll make a motion. I will move to, let's see, did I make this motion? Okay. I'll, we will.
Number two.
I've never done this. Okay. I move to direct staff to coordinate with the Monte Foundation to obtain a required coastal development permit for the event.
Could I add a friendly amendment to that, that at the same time that we can engage, you know, the commission on the environment and also reach out for some other statistics or something, some research at the same time going through that process? Would that be something that, other than just proceeding directly, would that be part of the research? So I guess that's my question, I just think that can be connected to that.
I'm hearing you suggest that we would bring some of the environmental studies through the commission on the environment that would be presented as part of the coastal commission packet. That's certainly doable.
Okay, thank you. And I can second you.
Okay, so.
Sorry, was the amendment accepted by the motion maker?
Is that acceptable?
Oh, I have to accept his amendment?
Yes.
If you want to.
Sure, we can consult with the commission on the environment to look at the environmental analysis.
Okay, with that in mind, we have our first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. It's been asked if we can do a three-minute personal break for the council members. Thank you. Okay, let's come back to order. Thank you. Okay, that'll bring us to item C, process to fill a vacant council seat. The recommended action is staff recommends the city council discuss the options to fill the vacant city council position left by Mayor Yvette Brooks. And either, one, direct staff to prepare documentation for call for a special election, or two, outline the appointment process to fill the vacancy.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and city council members. Tonight, for your consideration, we're going to discuss the process to fill a city council vacancy. The process for how to fill the vacancy is defined by California Government Code 36512. You have two options before you. You can either call for a special election or conduct an appointment to fill the vacancy for the remainder of the term. The appointment to fill the vacancy must occur within 60 days from commencement of the vacancy pursuant to this California Government Code section, and so that would occur on March 13th would be the deadline. For background, the person who fills the vacancy will serve through the remainder of former Mayor Brooks's term, so December of 2026. The person who fills the vacancy must also meet the requirements of regularly elected officials. So you must be a resident of Capitola, you must be a registered voter within Capitola, and you must be at least 18 years of age. And those requirements would apply to either someone who wins the seat through a special election or someone who is appointed by the city council. If the city council chose to pursue a special election, it can be held at any time, as we are over 114 days from the next regular election. The cost for a special election, I just received the numbers from the county clerk's office, would be approximately $49,189 to $56,216. That cost is based on an estimate of $7 to $8 per voter. We now have just over 7,000 registered voters in Capitola. If the city council wishes to call a special election, staff will return at a later meeting date with the required resolutions and a budget amendment, as we currently do not have funds budgeted to conduct a special election, though staff would bring forward a budget amendment if that is the council's direction. If the city council wishes to follow the appointment process, there is no statutory requirement defined in the government code regarding the appointment or how to appoint a successor. The requirement would need a majority vote of the city council, so at least three-fourths, yes, three-fourths vote. Some examples of how other cities have conducted the appointment process is you can accept applications from the public, there is an option to conduct interviews, and then conduct an appointment at a council meeting, and again, it would just be a majority vote to conduct that appointment. Another example would be to select the individual with the next highest number of votes from the most recent election. And then another example would be that each council member could present a nomination of a candidate, and then the full council would vote on the appointment of one successor to fill the vacancy. So tonight, we are really looking for direction from the city council as to whether the council wishes to pursue a special election or to conduct an appointment process. If the council does desire to conduct appointment process, I would love to get a little bit further direction on what that process would look like and the timing of such. And so I'm available for any questions, and we are here to await your direction.
Thank you. We'll open it up to council questions.
I'm sorry, I should have asked this question before. My understanding that this has happened on two other occurrences in the history of Capitola?
I believe it has happened twice in Capitola's history. It's not a very common occurrence.
And do we know if the process was used on those two occurrences?
Off the top of my head, I do not. I can defer to our city manager to see if he's aware, but it's not super common, and our records from that time period aren't especially clear or accessible. So we can conduct some further research if that's the council's desire.
Sure, I should have asked that question before. I was just wondering if it was going to be covered, so I apologize for that. But I don't have any other comments, and I'll hear from either.
Question I have would be, is, yeah, we would look for some direction if we decided to take the route of appointment. But at this point, we can go to public comment. Welcome.
Thank you, council, and congratulations, new council members. I am excited to speak to the council tonight. My name is Barry Scott. I am friends and fans of the three highest vote hitters in the recent election and am impressed by the timing of this all. I urge the council to take the route that involves selecting the next highest number of votes gotten, which would be Margot Morgan. She is a highly qualified candidate. She's been on the council, I've watched her in several council meetings, work well with others, and she obviously has the experience and knows the ropes. And I think it would be really an elegant solution to just appoint her to the seat that's become available now. She's got plenty of experience. She's stood as mayor during one of our most tumultuous years, greeted and toured the president through the city in those difficult times. And I think she's highly qualified, and this is a beautiful opportunity to conduct an appointment. So, thank you. And again, congratulations.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Susan Westman, and I would like to encourage you to go with the appointment process rather than have an election. But I would also like to encourage you to somehow involve the community in this process. I think it's important, just as if you're replacing a city manager or a police chief, that even if you have someone in mind, you go through a process where you do accept applications, you have some sort of interviews, and you have some sort of transparent ranking system for those people. That way, it validates to the community and to the person who gets selected that they were the best person to take on this job for the next two years. I would also like to ask that the person that you appoint be a person here for two years. I think just as Governor Gavin Newsom appointed someone to fill in for the Senate on the death of Dianne Feinstein, we all know that incumbents of any kind have a huge advantage in any following election. And I think it's important to let the election process be unencumbered, and so I would like to ask that you to ask that you consider appointing someone who's going to serve the community for those two years, but not someone who's going to be running for election in 2026. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. I'm Mike Morrissey. I live in, we have a house on Deep Hill. We've been here for about seven years. My wife and I, Meghan, put together a letter to the council that we submitted a few days ago. I think we're very aligned with some of the comments from Susan. The process here is critical. To be quite frank, I think credibility of the council is really on the line here, and the process needs to focus on transparency, on community involvement, less really about expediency. Doing it fast, but doing it poorly doesn't help us, right? We have a lot of really important challenges as a community. You guys, as a city council, have a lot of really important work to do and to really, in some ways, make up to do in terms of what's happened over the last few years. So we're counting on you to take your time, don't do anything rushed, make good decisions based upon feedback from the community, which really wants a process, okay? Appointing somebody tonight, doing it kind of backroom-y is just a bad way to go, right? Make it open, make it transparent, get the community involved. Let's build momentum to nearly help make Capitola the great city that it is and that it can continue to be with community involvement driving the process, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Evening, council members. Just a little history. In 1975, Phil Walker resigned from the council, and Jean DeLuque was appointed to take his position. And then around, I think it was about 1990, Margaret Fabrizio resigned from the council, and Gail Ortiz was appointed to fill her position. I think many of you are aware that there's a lot of people in Capitola that are unhappy with the direction the city's been going over the last six to eight years. You know, I'm one of them. I feel the city's been going downhill during that time from what it once was. The council and the city's manager's job isn't just to react to problems or fix things that are broken, it's to generate new ideas and move the city forward and make some improvements. Appointing a recent incumbent or somebody who simply threw their hat in the ring and wasn't elected is not going to get this city back on the right track. I think we need some new ideas, we need strong leadership from the council, we need Jamie to be stronger in the direction of the city, we need someone to join Jerry, John, and Joe to take control of the city again, because I think the council in the past has relinquished that control to staff. I think Jamie needs to get creative, and the council needs to build a fire under him so we can save this beautiful little town and the things we love in it, that we can protect the special amenities that make Capitola so great that we all love. And I think the way to do that is you establish a citizens committee, you open it up to the public, you allow them to apply for the position, they screen them, and they recommend the top three potential candidates to you, and you make the final decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any further public comment? No, seeing none. We can open it up to council comments.
Okay. So, it's my opinion that any leader of Capitola and any member of the city council should be elected through a democratic process. I'll try to speak up, thank you. Because I believe in the democratic process and that we should be aligned with the will of the general population, in my mind, there are only two options to move forward in the absence of Yvette Brooks. One would be to hold a special election, which we found out was $50,000 to $60,000. And the next option, which I believe to be the more appropriate of the two, is to select the next highest vote getter in the most recent election, which was only a couple months ago. I think if any resident of this city truly wanted to represent their community and serve in this capacity, then they would have ran in the most recent election, and the people have spoken. So I don't feel comfortable making any decision to appoint someone who has not gone through that democratic process. Thank you.
So, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and for showing up for your community. And thank you to all who have submitted comments regarding this item on the agenda. It's an important one. I don't think holding a special election makes sense financially for our small but mighty city, so I would recommend that the council make an appointment to fill this vacancy. Respectfully, we are all on the dais because we have campaigned on our vision and our ideas, and were elected by the residents of Capitola. We were voted in by community members, by our neighbors, by our friends, who believed in us and our vision and our ideas and our platform. We have been entrusted with this power to make decisions in this very, very challenging situation for the betterment of our beloved city. As such, we should be the body to determine who gets appointed in this two-year term. I really appreciated former Mayor Mike Termini's email urging us to be decisivist, decisive and expedient. We have real work we need to do to run the city, so I will support having the council decide who to appoint. And for me, the simplest path forward would be to select the individual who received the next highest number of votes from our most recent election. And that's how I feel.
Thank you. So, we all talked about running the process and just running through election. I think Councilmember Orbach and myself were out in the community quite a bit. One thing I heard very clearly on the doors I'm knocked on and people I've talked to was about community and community first, and having a community process and bringing our community back together. I don't know why some, there are some perceptions, and I always say a perception is true because it's what that person thinks. And I think this is an opportunity that we can come together in an expedited process. I agree with the comments that this council will be making the final decision, but having community input in a process, bringing in a process in an expedient amount of time brought forward to ensure that any of the candidates that even ran are still interested in proceeding forward. And then also having a process that our community felt like they're heard, vetted, and hopefully we could come to, I would hope that we come to some sort of process that would be expedited so we can work on the business of our community. So those are my comments.
Thank you. I would just like to add, I'm in agreement that an election is too costly and would take too long. I like the idea of the nomination. What I would like to do is ask staff to come back with the process and how we can get that done, and ask that we have this added and agendized to our special meeting that we're going to have January 16th, if that is allowable.
Just a small request for clarification. The January 16th city council meeting was meant to be a training, an onboarding session for our new council, so is the desire to push out the training session to wait until a new council member is appointed to allow them an opportunity to participate?
I think that would be appropriate.
So in that case, we would agendize on January 16th the appointment process?
Yes.
Is there any direction at this time from the city council in the terms of, like, are you seeking an application for appointment? And if so, I have a couple of follow-up questions on the application.
It sounded like we were looking for the highest vote getter.
Okay.
And then reaching out to that said person and then seeing if they're available. And then, well, apparently she sent a letter to the city council earlier, which is attached to the agenda.
That is correct.
So. You guys threw me for a loop there. However, yeah, that's what I'm looking for, and I believe the rest of the council is in the same favor. So yes, if we could do that and agendize it, and there'll be probably more things to follow that'll need to be agendized, but yes, that's what we're looking for. Thank you.
I think I want a clarification, too. We are not putting on the agenda the appointment process, right? For this next meeting, we are putting on the agenda to appoint.
I'm looking for both, yes, thank you.
So, to clarify, the appointing process, if this council would like to appoint the next highest vote number, that would be the process. So the next agenda item would be to appoint Margot Morgan, as she was the person who received the next highest number of votes. So if that is the council's direction, we can create an agenda item for January 16th. That would be the appointment of Margot Morgan, and we can conduct a swearing-in at that meeting, and that would be the follow-up action. If the council would like to further deliberate on the appointment process, then that can also be an agenda item, but it wouldn't be the actual appointment at that time.
You'd like to confer with our council members on that?
So, I'd like to make a motion that we go to our 16th meeting, but we reach out to the second highest vote getter to see interest other than, I didn't, if a letter came in this afternoon, I haven't completely read it, and then to also see if there was other applicants that would be interested that we could review and then work with by the council member, if that is acceptable, defining what that would look like. So that'd be my motion.
So, for clarification, you'd like to accept applications?
And accept applications and confer with the other second highest voter, and I think that we could also confer with the next vote getter now. I mean, if the crack carry is the next highest vote getter, and if that person is not interested, is it the next one? I mean, I think we have to talk about what the process looks like with all the information in front of us, so.
So, a couple of points of clarification. If the council's direction is to accept applications, first and foremost, there are certain requirements to run for office. You've all met those requirements as a part of the elective process. You must be a registered voter, you must be 18, you must be a resident of Capitola. So in order to create an application, we would have certain, like a form, for example, that had name, address, are you a registered voter, yes or no, your date of birth. Is there a desire from the city council to also have questions on that application?
Sorry, can I interrupt? Are we still talking about this process? Because I don't think that is the most efficient way forward to have an open application process. I think we are all in agreement that we want to utilize the most recent election vote outcome to determine who the next person is. And I have read all of the emails from everyone, I have read an email from Enrique Domo, who's present today, of his interests, as well as a letter from Margot Morgan expressing her interest. Both of those candidates went through the election process, have completed all of the FPPC forms, they have reached out to the community members, they have had conversations with the community members. I, can I make a motion? I would like to make a motion.
I think that Councilmember Johnson had a motion that he's working on.
So I would like for the council to consider those two applicants, those two candidates, and pick one of the two.
Yeah, but we have to back up to Councilwoman Johnson was working on a motion.
So I made a motion, and I guess that's the motion on the table.
Looking for a second, then. I guess the motion dies?
I'd like to make a motion to, number one, appoint a city council member, and, number two, to utilize our last election results in that decision-making process. I think the people who wanted to serve on this council applied to run during this election cycle and ran a campaign, and the residents of Capitola casted their votes for them. I move for the council to consider either Margot Morgan or Enrique Domo and make our decision by having a special meeting on January 16th.
I'll second that.
I guess we have a first motion and a second, and we'll be looking for a vote. Can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Jensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Orbach.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Clark.
Aye.
So just a question from staff. The agendized item is to utilize the results of the November 5th, 2024, general election to appoint the next city council member who will fill the vacancy for a term ending in December of 2026. Is the intent to interview both of those, the other candidates from the election, or is just the next top vote number supposed to be invited to attend that meeting?
My understanding of the motion was you would consider between the two other candidates who ran for office at the last election and make the decision at that next meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
No further questions from staff?
Clarification, what's that process look like, and are there questions? I mean, I think there's a whole bunch of discussion, we have to go into that.
Absolutely. So it would be at the council's direction. Staff can prepare a standard number of questions that could be asked of both candidates, and so it's up to the council to decide what those questions would be. There's no, like I said, there's no statutory requirement for this process, it's at the council's discretion. And so at this time, staff would love direction in terms of what questions you'd like asked, or we can provide examples if that's a desire of the city council.
I guess a question from the legal council, would that be a list of questions that would be generated from staff and then sent to us for review, or is that a question that we have to come up with tonight from the dais?
You can do whatever works. The clerk might have some questions that she could suggest tonight so that you would have the process laid out for the next meeting?
I was just wondering, from a legal standpoint, would they be reviewed then by your office to make sure that the questions are in line with the process?
Oh, yes, we could definitely review them. If you'd like, we can do it any way you'd like. If you'd like to come up with some questions tonight that you are okay with, and then my office can review them between now and the next meeting, that'd work fine. I can also work with staff to come up with some questions that will pre-vet in my office, and then at the next meeting, you could decide what works for you. Can I, while I have the mic, could I ask the audience to maybe keep it down a little bit? We're trying to get through this, and we just want to do it without distractions, and so we can all hear what the council wants to do. I know it's a controversial topic, but if you could just keep your comments, thanks.
Yeah, please bear with us, this is all something new for us, too, so we'll get through it. We'll get through it.
So in terms of process, just so I can summarize, it sounds like we are going to be agendizing and appointing one of the two candidates from the last election. We will work with the city attorney's office to develop a series of questions that the council can ask those candidates. One suggestion that the council may wish to consider is to either designate, and designate two of them to be on an ad hoc committee to review the questions with us, or the mayor, maybe designate the mayor to review the questions with them?
Or I think each council member can come up with a question and then provide that to us.
There may be some repetition, but if you wanted to submit those to staff, we'd be more than happy to take them and consolidate them into a single series of questions. That might be the most elegant solution.
I believe that would probably be the best.
And then I think we discussed the process and what that looked like, is it the anticipated or the applicant who come forward, sit in the middle room, and there's a question interview process that's done in the public for a brand act standpoint?
I can share, having gone through this process in other cities, typically what's provided is the council will ask the applicant a series of questions, recommended probably like between three to five questions, and have a set time limit for answers to each question. And then the meeting would be conducted in open session, and then the council can make a decision and vote following the interviews.
And would that be a ranked choice vote? I mean, so that it doesn't, because with four people?
It's at the discretion of the city council.
I think that would be correct. So what does that leave us? Do we need to make a motion? Do we need to make a motion?
If the motion would be for each council member to come up with a question, and then, you know, you guys could send those questions to me and the city attorney, and then we can review the questions and prepare them, and they could be a part of the agenda for the next meeting.
Great. So we're looking for a motion.
I move for each council member to come up with a question for our two candidates for the next meeting, next meeting next week.
Clarification, so that there would be four questions asked of the candidate?
Can I make a suggestion? I think that rather than council members coming up with questions, which kind of risks duplication, or what if council members, staff will work on questions. Council members, if you have questions, one, two, 12, feel free to forward them to the city clerk, and we will combine all of those, and we will use our discretion to come up with, what do we say, three to five questions that we think are vetted by my office, consistent with the will of the council, and we'll put those on the next agenda. Does that work? Okay. If that works, I don't think we need any further action, so long as the clerk has everything she needs. Yep. Okay. I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Good. That'll bring us to D, recommendations to nominate a new mayor and vice mayor. Again, I'd like to defer D, E, and F to the meeting on the 16th so that we can appoint a new council member. And then we can make all the other recommendations for motions for D, E, and F.
That works. There is an Art and Cultural Commission coming up, meeting scheduled for next week. However, my understanding is that if we can make the appointment next week, it can keep the Art and Cultural Commission sort of, they have an entire summer season they need to plan out. As long as we can do it next week, my understanding is the Art and Cultural Commission can still make it work, although I think there's a preference to maybe try to appoint tonight if they could so they could hold their meeting next week, but it's up to the council.
My feeling would be to wait for the fifth council member, but I'll let other people chime in.
I don't have a strong preference. I'm fine with that.
I like to wait.
Thank you.
So as we just, as that process, so we would go through the interview process, we would then, that council member would then be sworn in, sat, and then we'd go through the process.
That's what I envision, yes. So with all of the items taken into account, I'd like to adjourn this meeting, but I'd like thanking everyone for coming, and remember to be good to one another, and we'll see everybody on the 16th. Excellent intervention.